Let us come to order and join in the press.
Hold on. The flag is still flying of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, unencumbered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As you can tell, our numbers are few tonight. Mandy would you call the roll anyway?
DeYoung.
Here.
Raynor Horse.
Here.
DeAnstruth.
Here.
Carlstone.
Here.
And Hopkins, Horr, and Ward are absent.
Be sure they get doc. Okay, we would request that anyone that's listening on the phone, first of all, would you take your phones on you until the appropriate time to speak. And if you do have a comment, please identify yourself and your address and keep your comments brief and to the point. Next up is the 10th of agenda. Do we have a motion for it?
Still moved.
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion on it? Hearing none. Would you please call the, take the roll, Mandy?
Carlstone.
Yes.
Raynor Horse.
Yes.
DeAnstruth.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes. That is carried. Next, we have the acceptance of a civil service commission certified list of police officers. Would you please enlighten us, Mike?
Yes, Councilmember DeYoung, and for those in attendance and those calling at home, I'm actually on slide number two this evening, and as Councilmember DeYoung stated, the civil service was recently certified. Advocates that they felt were eligible for the position of police officer in the city of Pella. And we have one individual that's being certified tonight, that's Mr. Chase Poston. And staff is recommending the acceptance of the certified police officer list. And I would ask Captain Hossi, do you have any additional comments on the civil service process or the certification list that we're considering this evening?
No, not at this time unless the council has any other questions.
Thank you.
Do we have other candidates that didn't pass muster?
We did have, we had other candidates. It was a little bit less than our normal processes, but Mr. Poston was the only one that passed all of the, all the steps of the criteria to be certified.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion to accept this shortlist?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? All right, Mandy, would you please call the roll?
Raynor Horse, yes. Carlstone?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
DeAnstruth?
Yes.
Motion carried. At this time, anyone wishing to address the council on an agenda item is welcome to do so. Seeing none, we will move on to approval of consent agenda. Do we have a motion regarding that?
So moved.
Support.
Can we be repetitive? Yes.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing done. Mandy, would you please call the roll?
Raynor Horse?
Yes.
DeAnstruth?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
The count.
We will move on to a public hearing on the adoption of the fiscal year 2223 budget. Would you care to elaborate, Mike?
Yes, Councilmember DeYoung, I'd be happy to explain this item. As Councilmember DeYoung stated, what this resolution would do would approve FY '23 fiscal year budget. And it's important to note, when we talk about the fiscal year 2023 budget, we're talking about the fiscal year that would begin on July 1st of this year and extend through June 30th of 2023. What we have up here on slide number three this evening is just an overview of the city's finances. Specifically, what we're doing is just an overview of the '23 budget compared to the FY '22 budget. Now, overall, when we talk about revenue for the city of Pella that's associated with this budget, we have a total estimated revenue collections that just shy of $47.4 million. As far as total expenses, we're right at just over $46.7 million. Now, as far as some highlights it is concerned, most people don't realize this, but when we talk about the city's revenue, the total revenue, utility revenue makes up over half of the city's revenue collections for our operations. And likewise, when we look at total expenses, once again, we're looking at operating expenses, and those will be heavily associated with the city's utilities as well. I would also like to point out that this budget is very heavy on capital improvements. In fact, we have an estimated $9.8 million of capital improvements that are associated with this 2023 budget. Roughly about, not quite half, not a strong, 4.4 million or so is associated with street improvements. So this will be a busy year coming up this next summer for street construction activity within the city of Pella. In fact, we have a couple of projects that are included in this budget that we'll be considering later this evening. So overall, when we look at revenues and expenses, we're projecting a slight surplus next year with just over $651,000 for the city as well. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, in reviewing rates this year, I would like to mention and point out, it's one of the key items that's associated with the budget. There's no proposed increases either in the state's property tax rate or utility rates for this year as well. What we have listed on this chart is just a comparison of the city's property tax rate comparable to other cities that are similar size to Pella. It's important to note, when we talk about the city's property tax rate, generally speaking, we have one of the lowest property tax rates in the city and the state of Iowa, excuse me. And in fact, this will be the 21st year they'll remain at $10.20 per thousand dollars of taxable valuations. But generally speaking, when you look at the cities on this list, we're about two-thirds of their property tax rate on what they have, we're just over 10, and they're just over 15 when it compares to other communities. Mandy, let's go ahead, please. Now, as far as city electric rates are concerned, again, we're not proposing any increase in the city's utility rates. It is important to note that we have made, as far as rates are concerned with the electric utility, we have made significant progress over the years with the city's electric utility. In fact, when you look at our rates, we're in the top 21% in the state of Iowa when you look at the average kilowatt per hour price. Now, generally speaking, when you compare us to other municipal utilities around this area, we rank very, very well. When you look at those utilities that are lower than us, it's important to keep in mind, when you talk about electric utilities, roughly 80% of the electric utility's cost is associated with power supply and transmission. And you may be asking, why am I mentioning this? Generally, the utilities that are lower than us are generally located on the western side of the state, and they have access to hydro, federal hydroelectric power that they do receive at a discount, which aids them in as far as rate competitiveness. I would also like to mention, when we consider rates, particularly on utilities, the rate is one thing, but also a key factor for our utilities is reliability. And the system that we have for the electric utility has a top-notch reliability. Roughly 95% of our distribution system is currently placed underground as well, which helps out tremendously. So let's go ahead. Mandy, I talked briefly about water and wastewater rates up here. Now, looking at the wastewater, water and wastewater rates, we have a comparison to locally utilities in this area. What I would say is we would rank very, very well comparatively speaking when you compare us around locally, and we also would rank very well when you compare us within the state of Iowa as well. Particularly when you look at water, though it is very important to note that some utilities may have a lower rate than us, but when you look at the quality of the city's water that comes out of the pipe, it's a very high quality of water that we do produce in our system. One of the key things that's difficult to measure on your rates is if you don't have a good quality water that comes out of your pipe, if you don't spend significant amounts, not significant, but to ensure that you have a solid treatment process. Often what happens is utilities may have lower rates than us, but their customers have to buy filters on for their system to purify their water. Those costs aren't included in the municipal water rate as well. So overall, when you look at our water rates, we feel we rank very competitive, we're very competitive not only locally but also across the state of Iowa. And that goes for wastewater rates as well. Would be remiss, we don't have a chart of the area as well, and we're also not proposing any increases for power fiber as well for next year. So overall, once again, there is no property tax rate associated with the rate, increases associated with this budget, nor is there any rate increases in utility prices as well. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. One of the key items that we didn't talk about and will be having further discussions this spring is the Pella Community Ambulance. The ambulance has provided excellent service to our community for over 37 years. We did talk about recently that the Pella ambulance has experienced financial difficulties on this, and it's due to basically an increase in call volume that's happened over the years. And also, a larger percentage of the call volumes are Medicaid and Medicare patients, which basically means when your call volume increases and the greater percentage of your patients are Medicaid and Medicare, the problem with that, or the concern with that rather, is those reimbursements occur at a lower rate than private insurance rates do as well. So with that, those two items, as well as the lack, or I'd say not lack, but it's been more difficult to recruit volunteers to assist the ambulance, what that's done is force the ambulance to hire full-time individuals that help the Pella ambulance. This is what's led to the financial difficulties. And it's equally important to note, as far as the city's role in this, we've budgeted $300,000 for assistance with the Pella Community Ambulance. And we've talked about various operating models for next year. We intend to further narrow down those discussions during the month of April as well. But the key takeaway is, is we have contingency funds budgeted for the Pella Community Ambulance. And what we stated in the budget is, included in the budget, we intend to have a formal vote on the operational plan for the Pella ambulance early in the month of April as well. So the takeaway, we included $300,000 of contingency funds for the Pella Community Ambulance for next year. Mandy, let's go ahead, please. Now, as far as the long-term facilities plan is concerned, we have the engineering expenses necessary to support the facility plan. The two big-ticket items associated with the facilities plan would be a proposed indoor recreation center for the community as well as enhancements to the current community center. What we've done with this budget includes engineering fees for the facilities plan, but it does not include the construction costs for the facilities plan. The intention with that is, council, we are scheduled to make decisions on the facility plans, and we've given ourselves, I believe, until May 1st of this year was the deadline that we had with that as well. So looking at the facilities plan, we've included engineering fees associated with the engineering's fees, and once we have the target or the council's desires or the council's approved, facilities plan will factor that in in the future years as well. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as personnel is concerned, it's a pretty static budget as far as any type of personnel increases that we had. We did have personnel increases budgeted for cost of living adjustment for city employees. We are estimating those to be at 2.5% as well. In addition, we had one full-time employee that's been proposed, or additional employee that's been proposed with this budget, that was for our community services department. In addition, we have a part-time dispatcher for the police department, and those were the two new employees associated with the budget. Now, Mandy, let's go ahead. I believe that concludes everything. Councilmember DeYoung, and overall, once again, what is being presented is the fiscal year 2003 budget. And I believe that concludes the staff presentation. Councilmember DeYoung would be more than happy to answer any questions the council may have on this item.
Thank you, Mike. One thing I'd kind of like to underline is we spent a lot of money and a lot of planning on water supply, and there are many, many communities our size that coordinate the water and send it down the system. And after that, it's up to the homeowner to either get a water softener, or filter system, or whatever, to turn it into a good quality water. I'm very proud of what we have down there. That being said, Mandy, are there any written comments?
No written comments.
Any oral comments from the council?
I just wanted, when you talk about the number of employees that ambulance services, that 300,000 is a net, you know? So when reality, a year from now, we're going to have way likely, way more employees, way more revenue, and way more expense on that. So there will be a big change in those numbers once we get through this next fiscal year.
That is correct.
Do you want to mention the nonprofit versus the city taking over ambulance?
Yeah, I think in summary, Councilmember DeAnstruth, feel free to chime in on this. Currently, the Pella ambulance is a nonprofit agency as well. We have done an analysis on continuing on as a nonprofit agency versus the city taking over operations. And from a financial standpoint, our analysis, basically, we think it's a push either way. Our group, and I guess I'll, instead of saying our group, I'll say city administration feels when we look at the issues associated with the Pella Community Ambulance, that is retaining our current employees for the ambulance and also attracting particularly paramedics to the, to the, to the area and working for the ambulance in the future, we feel it would be beneficial for the city to take over the operations of the, of the Pella Community Ambulance with it. So from a high-level overview, the key takeaway is we're eligible for grants to operate the Pella Community Ambulance. However, we also have higher personnel costs associated with the state retirement system as well. So when you factor those two factors in, the end result, it's a net financial, the budget financially either way, we just feel it's better operationally if they were operated by the city of Pella, and that's city administration's position on the matter. And Councilmember DeAnstruth, you've been involved in these discussions, is there anything you'd like to add on it?
No, I think, yeah, we spent a lot of time on it, and the details have to be worked out yet in the next month or two.
Okay, thank you. Any written comments, Mandy?
No written comments.
Anything from the council? Thank you for joining us, Spencer. Any comments from you folks out there? Yes, sir?
Our water is terrible. Our water softener is full of crud after a couple of years, and the water quality, yeah, I get what you're saying. We're putting a lot of calcium down in our pipes and water softener. It's not, I don't know what's wrong.
Any comments from the back of the room?
We could, oh, Danny, but my thought is, we could probably put it on a list to have her text look at the concern.
Well, it sounds like the private system may need good flushing, too. You know, we changed from light softened water now to Jordan Law water. It is a little bit harsher water, a lot more minerals in it, but it's different than the rest. So maybe some of that needs to back flush out and cleaned out, and so that you're truly running just our new water, too. That might be something you might want to contact the plant, and the guys might have some idea for.
And something along those lines, a number of years ago, the federal government mandated that in recognition of blocked lead water pipes, that we run, always run a water that puts down a, a level of lime in water pipes to protect the consumer from the possibility of, of lead poisoning. So that could be part of it, too. I know we fought that at the greenhouse.
And Mark brings up a great point. You know, now with our different water, we don't feed as much lime, so it's a balancing act. We still want to leave that, that thin layer on there, not take it all off, so it's, like I say, it's a balancing act, and everybody's home system's a little bit different.
Yeah, when I first bought my house, the pipes had galvanized, and they start leaking right away. I replaced all the packs, but my water heater got, gets full again.
And we expect galvanized, it's the first of the day. Actually, lead holds up real well, but it's, it's not good for us. We've run it out since we started using it years ago.
And a while back, you mentioned what the sweet spot was temperature-wise.
Well, that's more on your water heater. If you're having water heaters foul up a lot, or if you're essentially ended up with some sandy particles in your bath water, you actually have your water heater turned up too high, because it's, it's causing the minerals to re-coagulate, if I have the term correct, to get back together, and then it's a sandy material. So I think the sweet spot's around 140, but a lot of those you can crank to the 150s, and then you'll start creating some grit. So the guys can help with that, too, or it's on the internet, too, if you Google that particular, what's the ideal temperature for water heater. A lot of people would see that, and then that causes that. And then that also builds up in other things in your system. And if your water softener, after that, it's feeding the, the sandy particles, too, it would otherwise stay soluble, and there are minerals, which most of them are good for.
Anyone else? Seeing none, we will take a motion to close the public hearing.
Still moved.
Support.
Motion in support, all in favor, vote yes. Opposed, nay. Clerk call the roll.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Raynor Horse?
Yes.
DeAnstruth?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes. Motion passes. Resolution number 6411, a resolution adopting fiscal year '2223 annual budget. Anything to add, Mike?
No, sir.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, vote yes. Opposed, no. Mandy, would you please call the roll?
Raynor Horse?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
DeAnstruth?
Yes.
Motion carried. This time we'll have a public hearing regarding the Boss Land and Drive reconstruction project bids. Would you take over, Mike?
I guess Councilmember DeYoung, I'd be happy to explain this item for those calling at home. I'm on slide number 11 this evening, this evening. As Councilmember DeYoung stated, what this resolution would do would approve the plan's specification, estimated cost, and assess the bids for the Boss Land and Drive, a proposed reconstruction project. And we do have the project highlighted up here on the big board, and as you can see, we've highlighted Boss Land and Drive, which actually connects up to County Highway T-15 as well. The street segment that we're considering this evening is actually roughly right around 1,300 in a linear beat as well. And we do have a description of some of the issues that we've currently encountered with this proposed road segment that we are reasons for the project as well. Mandy, let's go ahead, please. Now, it is important to note, we did conduct a bid letting on the project with it, and we did receive two bids. The low bidder on the project was Lomers Construction, and they were at $534,667.50. Our engineer on the project was guardian associates in error, recommending ordering the contract to the responsible bidder, which is Lomers Construction. It is very important to note, and considering this item, that the engineer's opinion of probable cost was just shy of $218,000. So if council were to approve this project, we actually issued a notice to proceed on the project on April 10th, and an estimated date is July 15th for the project. But keep in mind, those are working days, and that is entirely dependent on the weather as well. So roughly 40 working days for the project, estimated completion date is July 15th. And finally, Councilmember DeYoung, it is important to note that staff is in agreement with engineer's recommendation, and we are recommending approving this contract this evening.
Any written comments, Mandy?
No written comments.
Anything from the council?
I'm not in his business. Do we know anything about these contractors? Have we worked with them before? That's a big discrepancy if you're...
Yeah, Leroy's done a lot of work for us in the last few years. The other, the other bid is actually from Davenport, and you can understand the prices of traveling and staying in motel. Unfortunately, that eliminated some other bidders that looked at the project real hard. But no, Leroy's put out a real good project for us in the past, and he has real low overhead, so that's how he's able to pick off a couple of here every year, too. The last one he did was West 30.
Anything from the audience? Hearing none. Will honor a motion to close the public hearing.
Still moved.
Okay, all in favor, vote yes. Opposed, no. Mandy, please call the roll.
DeAnstruth?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Raynor Horse?
Yes.
Motion carried. Resolution number 6412, a resolution approving plan specifications, form of contract, estimate of cost, receiving a bid to making award contract for the Boss Land and Drive reconstruction project. Anything further, Mike?
No, sir.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Any further discussion? Hearing none.
I'll have a quick question. At one point, I heard there was some issue here, Danny was below the street. I think we talked about that. I'll get it fixed.
It's, it's a little bit steep as far as paving design, the slope was originally built 30 years ago. And with the soil types we had, they didn't put any cutoff walls, no rock subways, no grain tile, or anything like that. It's actually bow channels underneath. We've pumped hundreds of yards of low-quality concrete just to fill the void, and you can still drive and see it punch it out. We were worried last summer we were going to have a gravel truck fall through and mellow it. But the new construction, as we reconstructed, every 200 feet, we're going to put in what's called a cutoff wall with tiling, and then longitudinal tile, two tile up to seven grade, and that wall is essentially a lining of clay that'll stop that water from running over 200 feet, force it into that clean rock, and then tile into the subgrids. So we've improved on the design for the soil and the soap, because we're stacking this load.
Anyone, anything from the audience? Hearing none. Mandy, would you please call the roll?
Raynor Horse?
Yes.
DeAnstruth?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes. Motion carried. Public hearing regarding 250th Avenue reconstruction project bids.
Yes, Councilmember DeYoung, and once again, I'd like to refer everyone's attention to the big board for the presentation of this item. Very similar public hearing tonight, what we're talking about is street segment on 250th Avenue. This is the county line road. The highlighted street segment that we have showing up on the big board is the red highlighted area that we have listed up here. Vermeer Corporation is just to the west as well. And we have a little bit of background on the original street segment here, what's currently out there as well. But once again, what this resolution would do is approve the proposed construction contract for the project, along with accepting the bids for the project as well. So, Mandy, let's go ahead, please. Very similar, we did conduct a bid letting on the project. Once again, we had two bidders for the project. Lomers Construction was the low bidder on the project, at $384,880.50. The engineer's opinion of probable cost was at $409,776 on the project. And once again, staff is in agreement with the engineer's recommendation on the project. Council were to approve this resolution, we issued a notice to proceed on the project on April 10th. And the project would be scheduled for completion right around July 1st of this year. So the key thing to keep in mind, these are working days, and that's an estimated 30 working days. That's entirely dependent upon the weather this summer as well. So with that, Councilmember DeYoung, that concludes the staff presentation. Be more than happy to answer any questions the council may have on this item.
Any written comments, Mandy?
No written comments.
Anything from the council? I think that was originally done by Vermeer's own crew, wasn't it?
Danny, you may...
That was my understanding. They're in a slow period, but Gary sent the boys east to go pave their road. It just saw it was operating thick. It shows it today. No, never tried. And this is a simple project. Pretty much, I want to say just blade and pave, but you know, we're clearly no sewer work, no water anywhere, nothing old enough, so.
Anything from the audience? Hearing none. We will go ahead and call the roll.
We do, we do, sorry. We have a question online.
Okay.
As a parent with kids at the Vermeer daycare, they're wondering how the daycare will be accessed.
Yeah, Vermeer will be taking care of that, and they will be creating a detour on the west side of the pavilion using their own entrance rooms. But that will be for their customers at the daycare only, and they're going to provide their own signage, so at night they'll still close that off, so people don't sneak through there that are not customers.
Good question. Any further? We will accept a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion in support. All in favor, vote yes. Opposed, no. Clerk call the roll.
Raynor Horse?
Yes.
DeAnstruth?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes. Motion passed. The District Resolution 6413, a resolution approving plan specifications, form of contract, estimate of cost, receiving of bids, and making award contract for the 250th Avenue reconstruction project. Anything further, Mike?
No, sir.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Motion in support. Any further discussion? Motion in support. Any further discussion? That question about the academy was very good.
It was.
Yeah, we're actually, to help with that, they're giving us an easement in the ditch in front of the current Layley building. We're gonna build a little gravel runaround also, and then maintain that. Yeah, Vermeer will communicate with their own people and their own customers also.
All in favor, vote yes. Oppose, no. Clerk call the roll.
Rayna Horse?
Yes.
Carl Stone?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
De Anstrach?
Yes.
Motion carried. We have a request for a new Class C liquor license with outdoor service catering and Sunday sales for the Pellet Entertainment Group LLC doing business at Smash Park. Can you explain, Mike?
Yes, Mr. Van Allen, actually, boy, habits are hard to break. I slipped up once tonight, as Councilmember De Young. Yes, this request comes to us tonight from the Pellet Entertainment Group that's located at Thousand and Five Field Road. And it is for a new liquor license with Sunday sales privilege. It is important to note that the term of the proposed license is twelve months, and the council were to approve it this evening would expire on March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. It's equally important to note, the application was completed with the state in its pending drawn shop certification. Therefore, tonight, we do have a conditional recommendation for approval in its pending receipt of the drawn shop certification. So with that, Councilmember De Young, that concludes our presentation. Be more than happy to answer any questions the council may have on this item.
Thank you. Do we have a motion for conditional approval?
So moved.
Motion in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, vote yes. Oppose, no. Clerk call the roll.
Rayna Horse?
Yes.
Carl Stone?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
De Anstrach?
Yes.
Motion carried. Resolution number six-four-one-four, a resolution approving a hotel motel distribution agreement with the Pellet Convention and Visitors Bureau. Please, Mike?
Yes, Councilmember De Young, I'd be happy to explain this item. As Councilmember De Young stated, with this resolution, we do approve a new three-year contract with the Pellet Convention and Visitors Bureau. We do have some highlighted items on here as far as significant items the council consider. The three-year term would actually extend through March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. Now, probably the biggest difference that we have with the new contract is an increase in the distribution of hotel motel taxes. Currently, the agreement's right at fifty-seven percent. The proposed agreement that we're considering this evening would be up to sixty percent. And so roughly a five-point-two-six percent increase, or we believe just over ten thousand dollars per year. Now, other items that we have as far as the community center director being a non-voting representative on the board remains the same and is consistent with prior agreements as well. Now, it is important to note that we did discuss this request or this proposed contract at our March first meeting. And council directors proceeded with formal consideration of the contract, which we do have this evening. Staff is in agreement, is actually recommending approval of the contract this evening. So with that, Councilmember De Young, that concludes our presentation. Be more than happy to answer any questions the council may have on this item.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
In support. Okay. Any discussion?
Just wanted to say that we got our new twenty-two visitor's guide at the store today, and I was extremely impressed with the layout, the colors. It just was vibrant, and I'm really excited to be a part of this organization. They do an amazing job for our community.
And this will be under the guidance of the new director, right?
Absolutely, yes. Yes, absolutely.
I hope this allows enough money to put some real deal welcome signs.
Yeah.
Into our community.
Well, if there are anything like the visitor's guide, you really have to see it. If you haven't, you can come pick one up at Nick's Greenhouse. We were very, there's a little promo, it's a conflict of interest.
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is. I was very impressed, and, you know, Ann hasn't even been at the helm for a year, but I was thrilled with it.
All right. All in favor, vote yes. Oppose, no. Clerk call the roll.
Rayna Horse?
Yes.
Carl Stone?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
De Anstrach?
Yes.
Motion carried. Leads us to Resolution six-four-one-five, a resolution approving preliminary plat for South Main subdivision plat two. Mike?
Yes, Councilmember De Young, I'd be happy to explain this item for those calling at home on slide number seventeen this evening. As Councilmember De Young stated, with this resolution, we do approve the preliminary plat for Outlot C of the South Main subdivision. And what you see up on the big board is the South Main subdivision that we have this evening. And it's somewhat unusual, but what we're actually talking about this tonight is Outlot C. And it's the yellow highlighted area up on the big board. The area that I'm referring to is just about, just under an acre in size. Now, it is important to note, on the current plat, this is simply identified as an outlot that we have. But what's being proposed tonight is actually three new buildings on there that would all be single-family attached buildings. Equally important to note that we did discuss this, a closely associated request for me to modify the planned unit development for the development earlier. And so the planning process is intended to be consistent with the zoning changes approved by council earlier this year or actually last year in December two thousand and twenty-one. But overall, when we talk about the three new buildings, there'll be three new single-family attached homes, six housing units in general in this acre lot that we have listed up here on the big board. Now, for those in the audience, when we talk about the planning process, generally, there's two types of plats that the city considers. When we use the terminology preliminary plat, that's the overall development for the development, overall concept plan. It usually involves public infrastructure on this. Now, in this case, when we're only considering acre lot as well, the preliminary plat's going to look a lot like the final plat by the time we're all done with things as well. So again, preliminary plat that we're talking about this evening is just for Outlot C. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Okay, now, as far as the city's subdivision ordinance, when we review preliminary plats, what the ordinance says is that we want to review it for coherence with the city's comprehensive plan of the zoning and subdivision ordinances as well. Now, when we talk, once again, about preliminary plats, this is the overall concept. So as in terms of overall concept, it would just be for Outlot C. And we can see the preliminary plat or proposed preliminary plat up on the big board. And again, we're looking at those three new buildings, and they'd be three single-family attached homes that would be proposed or by the developer, or that is being proposed by the developer as well. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, the zoning for this, as we stated earlier, the council actually approved amendments to find unit development for the overall development to include these three new single-family buildings that are being proposed this evening as well. So from a zoning standpoint, when we look at the proposed preliminary plat, we believe it is consistent with the city's zoning ordinance. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, pictured up on the big board is the color elevations for the new buildings that we have up there. But once again, proposing three new single-family attached homes on the site. The color elevations are showing up here on the big board. We believe these will be consistent with the existing South Main subdivision, and we have been in nicely with the existing development. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. One of the items that we always want to review preliminary plats on is we want to make sure that it's consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. When we look at the city's comprehensive plan in this general area, the comprehensive plan targeted infill development similar to what's being now actually constructed and proposed to be constructed on the South Main site as well. In fact, the comprehensive plan talked about infill development and its importance for the community as well. So when we look at the comprehensive plan and considering the South Main development, we feel strongly aligned with the city's comprehensive plan. In addition, we also believe the proposed preliminary plat with three new single-family attached units from a land use compatibility matrix indication according to our charts, we believe that it is compatible with the existing development. And as a result, we do believe that the city's, or the South Main preliminary plat that we're considering this evening is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Okay. Now, in summary, based on our review, we believe that the proposed plat this evening meets the city's requirements of the city zoning code, the subdivision code, and our comprehensive plan. And as a result, we are proposing approval of the plat as submitted this evening. Equally important to note, the planning and zoning commission unanimously approved this preliminary plat at their meeting on February twenty-eighth. And I believe, Councilmember De Young, that concludes our presentation this evening. Be more than happy to answer any questions the council may have on this item.
Thank you, Mike. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Motion in support. Any discussion? All good? Okay. All in favor, vote yes. Oppose, no. Clerk call the roll.
Rayna Horse?
Yes.
Carl Stone?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
De Anstrach?
Yes.
I was glad to see in that one picture that green space is preserved, that was originally proposed there.
Of course, one logistical, who's shoveling the alley through, you know, to the south of the Baptist Church and over? Is that all private, is that all HOA covered? Is that city street?
Any?
HOA, not city, no.
Yeah.
All private.
Private.
Resolution number six-four-one-six, a resolution approving a twenty-eight E agreement with the Indianola Municipal Utilities for a joint public improvement project fiber transport line, Pellet to Indianola. Please, Mike?
I guess Councilmember De Young, for those calling at home on slide twenty-three this evening, and as Councilmember De Young stated, what we're entertaining this evening is a proposed twenty-eight E agreement with Indianola Municipal Utilities, commonly referred to as IMU. Purpose of this agreement is to construct a joint transport line for our respective telecommunications utilities. Now, for those in the audience and those calling at home in council square of this, but when we refer to twenty-eight E agreements, what we're talking about is a contract between the two entities, and the twenty-eight E reference is just to Iowa Code, twenty-eight E of the Iowa Code that actually encourages municipalities to work together on joint projects for the common good of their respective communities. And that's the reason they're commonly referred to as twenty-eight E agreements. Now, looking at the benefits of the transport line that we have, to explain what our system currently has is currently, we have roughly seventy-eight miles of fiber optic lines within our community. Any home or business within our corporate limits that wants high-speed internet access, we can accommodate those individuals. In addition, we actually built a transport line that we own all the way up to our internet service provider in Grinnell. Our internet service provider is Cedar Falls Municipal Utilities. So we own a thirty-four mile transport line. We lease a secondary line as pure backup purposes in case our main line is ever down. We currently lease that line. It's always been in our long-term plans to have two lines out of Pellet that would be owned by the municipality. So what's being proposed tonight is a joint line with IMU, where we could hit roughly approximately forty mile, forty to forty-five mile transport line that would connect the two utilities together. What this would allow us to do if this line is constructed to Indianola, Indianola has a path to downtown Des Moines to connect to our internet service provider, Cedar Falls Municipal Utilities. Cedar Falls Municipal Utilities is also their internet service provider. So if you want to look at it just in pure, simple terms, we're building a linkage between the two utilities that will connect us. We'll both have two diverse paths with our systems, one in Des Moines, one in Grinnell, to connect to our internet service provider. So reliability on both systems is going to improve with it. So from our standpoint, this will add additional capacity to Pellet Fiber, and we believe it will also improve reliability for our utility, particularly as we gain customer share, market share, and increase our transport load as well. So that's the key item and the reason why this project's being proposed this evening. Let's go over the key terms of the agreement. So, Mandy? Now, as far as the transport line, it's gonna be owned jointly by the city of Pellet and IMU. Now, each party will be responsible for its share of the maintenance on the line, and how we define that is the midpoint. So when we look at the line, the midpoint's gonna be roughly about half the halfway point on the line. We'll take our share in Indianola, maintain their share of the project. Now, as far as the overall cost of the project, it's estimated just shy of two-point-nine million dollars. Each party would be responsible for fifty percent of the overall total project cost. Now, as far as the coordination of the project, it is important to note that the city of Pellet will be the lead agency, which means that we'll be doing the legwork as far as hiring the engineer and the construction contracts as well. But before the project can proceed, both projects have to approve the construction contract as well. So, but we will be the lead agency for the project as well. Now, as far as the timeline, this line will be very beneficial to both utilities and in center, both parties' best interest, and help us in a timely manner, which is one of the reasons why we are considering this project, that it'll really initiate this project. So what the agreement actually says is both parties will use their best efforts to complete the project in a timely manner. And I would also like to mention that this agreement is mainly intended to cover the construction of the line and the maintenance of the line. There will also be an operating agreement on the proposed line as well that will address during the construction project on it. So overall, again, what we're talking about is constructing a line that will connect the Indianola Municipal Utilities, Pellet Communication Utility to the city of Pellet on it. It will be a shared line, joint ownership of the line. It'll provide both utilities with diverse connection points to our internet service provider, which is Cedar Falls Municipal Utilities. So with that, Councilmember De Young, we are recommending approval of this contract this evening. Indianola meets the board of trustees for the Indianola Municipal Utilities, scheduled to consider this item, I believe, on March twenty-eighth of this year. So that concludes the staff presentation. Be more than happy to answer any questions the council may have on this item.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Support?
Support.
Any discussion?
I remember when, years ago, when we were in closed session, Tony was in the room with us, and we talked about this project. And we talked about it was a bold move, but it was a necessary move to keep things up and going. And it just is so wonderful to be able to put this on the floor finally, after all those years. And, Mike, thank you to you, because I know that you did a lot of negotiating and communicating with this project. And I'm very appreciative of everything you've put forth on this. So, thank you.
I appreciate the kind words, and I'd also like to thank our staff. They worked very hard on this agreement. Join Allison, our telecommunications director's been intimately involved in this as well. So it's been a lot of heavy lifting to this point, but we're happy to be at this point and have a viable agreement for council's consideration this evening.
And remind me, why do we pay for that leased line to have redundancy?
Roughly five thousand dollars a month.
All the money isn't going one way.
Exactly.
Okay. All in favor, vote yes. Oppose, no. Clerk call the roll.
Rayna Horse?
Yes.
Carl Stone?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
De Anstrach?
Yes.
Motion carried. An ordinance number one-oh-oh-seven, an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance to the city of Pellet, Iowa by amending the boundaries of the R-one-A district to include the property generally located north of the terminus, Comfortland Drive and Hazel Street, and directing the zoning administrator to note the ordinance number and date of this change on the official zoning map. This is the second reading.
I guess Councilmember De Young, I'll go ahead and give the presentation this evening. It might be a little brief for presentation, though we had a run first considering it's a second reading. But if you have any questions, feel free to stop me. As background, on this ATI group has submitted an application to rezone just over a hundred-and-eight acre parcel of land that is just north of Hazel Street in East Park Lane. It is the blue highlighted, purple highlighted area, actually up on our big board, for those following at home on slide number twenty-six this evening. Though overall, the current zoning for the property, the northern parcel, I believe, is zone A-one, agricultural. The southern portion of parcels are zoned, the single-family residential, R-one. Now, the request tonight is to rezone the property from R-one to modern density, single-family residential, R-one-A. There's two differences between R-one zoning and R-one-A zoning. The minimum lot size for R-one is currently at ten thousand square feet. R-one-A is roughly at eighty-five hundred square feet on this. And then when we look at the uses on this, R-one-A allows single-family attached homes to be built within the development where R-one is not currently, neither does A-one. And that's really the purpose of the rezoning request that we're considering this evening. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as the overall zoning of the area, we have listed up on the big board the proposed area that we are talking about is the Burgundy area. But as you can see, currently, the property is abutted by R-one property as well as R-one-A property. So from our standpoint, when you look at the issue of spot zoning, we don't see any spot zoning associated with it. The proposed zoning is consistent with what is currently abutting adjacent to the development as well. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as the city's comprehensive plan, it's very, very important to note, when we talk about terminology such as consistency with the city's comprehensive plan, it conforms with the city's comprehensive plan, meaning that we're taking a look at the entire comprehensive plan, which is roughly a hundred-and-forty pages. Now, as far as the comprehensive plan is concerned, there's a couple items that we tend to focus on. One's the future use land map. Second one would be the land use compatibility matrix. And we always want to take a look at those keys strategic objectives in the city's comprehensive plan. Now, from the future use land map, you can see up on the big board, it is identified for low-density residential as well as ag properties. So it largely follows the existing uses at the time when the comprehensive plan was proposed. The proposal this evening, we believe, however, does meet a key strategic objective in the city's comprehensive plan. And as council recalls, with the city's comprehensive plan, it's still true today. Housing was identified as a need in the community, all sorts of housing was identified as a need. In fact, the comprehensive plan went as far as to identify strategies to attract additional housing within our community. This is also consistent with the Marion County Housing Assessment that was performed for the community shortly after the city council adopted this comprehensive plan. At the time, the Marion County Housing Assessment, I believe, was completed in two thousand and sixteen, seventeen. It identified roughly, I believe, nine-hundred-and-sixty-six additional housing units that would need to be constructed in Pellet to meet demand for the year two thousand and twenty-five. In case you're wondering, that's about an increase fifteen percent over the base number of houses we had in Pellet at the time. It was a huge number on it as well. That's also been consistent with, we've heard from business and industry, the need for additional housing within our community. So from a key strategic standpoint, we believe housing is currently a need. It was a need at the time. And we believe that this proposed development meets a key strategic point in the comprehensive plan and key strategic goal of the comprehensive plan, which providing for additional housing with our community. and key strategic goal of the comprehensive plan, which is providing for additional housing with our community. We also believe that the lines of the city's future use land map. In addition, we also believe it fits nicely with the current land use compatibility matrix that we currently have. So, let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Yes, I got a little ahead of myself. We have a separate chart on the next slide with the land use compatibility matrix. But overall, we feel this development fits in very nicely with the existing neighborhood and we did not detect any land use compatibility issues on this as well. Let's go ahead, Mandy. Now, in summary, this is the second reading. The ordinance and staff is recommending approval of the rezoning requests. We believe it is in accordance with the city's comprehensive plan. And finally, it is important to note that this item was considered by the Planning and Zoning Commission at the February 28 meeting. They did approve it on a four to three vote. So, with that, Councilmember Deon, be more than happy to answer any questions the council may have on this item. Thank you. To get discussion going and we have a motion in a second? Okay. That being the case, do we have any discussion?
Does our comp plan have future street layout or growth on it? I know at one point I've seen some ideas, but how does this overlay or play with that?
The comp plan includes a transportation plan. Included in the transportation plan is the layout of future streets. For this general area up, up here, there is a proposed western connection over to Main Street that is aligned on it. Now, that's generally something when you look at the transportation plan, the comprehensive plan is considered right in the preliminary plat for the development and will be considered right in the general that. So, that's normally when we talk about the transportation plan.
I assume as part of the matrix, you're, you're assessing whether the development plot has the possibility of overlaying well with our future transportation plans?
Yeah. That's an item that generally we focus on when we do the plats for developments as well. When we talk about street connections in the future, we look at this. In this case, the comprehensive plan does identify a connection somewhere. Mandy, if we can go back to the, the area on your, maybe show the first slide for, for me. I want to say the comprehensive plan identifies this west connection out to Fountain View Drive through this site. So, what that means from our standpoint, when we look at it from a preliminary plat standpoint, the developer will need to have, it's going to be one of the requirements, we're going to have to show he's on their site, a connection to the west on it as well. But there'll be a lot of discussion on that very item where that, where that takes place. So, but that's going to be one of the requirements the developer will be required to show.
And do we have some back and forth with the developer on, so they don't stick it way up in the northeast corner and say, yep, see, it has a western outlet?
Yeah. That'll be a considerable discussion with the developer and it's quite common. In fact, usually for developments of this size, when you look at 108 acres on the development and likely it'll be done in phases, that'll be a key item of discussion is where that route alignment is. And so, there is, that is, that will be a heavily discussed item. And ultimately, as council is aware, council will have to finally say so on it because for the development to proceed, council will have to approve the preliminary platform that will identify that western connection.
And in light of what we heard last, uh, two weeks ago, we'll assume the developers will take into account, as we will, how that, how their plans affect the, you know, adjacent property owners, et cetera.
Yeah. What we intend to do with the fighting process and subdivision process, obviously generally what we've done in the past as part of our standard operating procedures. What we'll do is we'll take a look at the development. We'll take a look at the developer's plans for the phases of the development and the proposing. And generally, our, our standard operating procedures is the city engineer, which is Dean Stern Kim, usually perform the traffic analysis on it as well. And that's really for the city's standpoint because as we have just a general rule, when we've added new developments, one of the items that we've gone back and double seen, double-checked is the off-site improvements that will be necessary to maintain the existing service level of city streets on it as well. And if there's any additional improvements that are necessary to accommodate the developer that may be off-site or triggered off-site improvements and so on. Generally speaking, that's, will be done as part of our process. And once again, that's usually here in the plating subdivision process.
I'm following up on some of the comments last time. Are, are there any plans for sidewalks on Country Club and Hazel that were, are in the works?
What we have here is we've done a preliminary review on this as well. We're intending to talk to council because we didn't have a full council tonight. We wanted to bring the item back to council if you recall with sidewalk, answer your questions. We've went out and we've looked at Hazel Street and we've looked at Country Club Drive. We believe that it is, there could be sidewalks on those streets, but there's some issues to consider in both those plans. And we were planning on discussing it with the full council. But, so, the answer is yes, we've looked at it and we will be discussing it once we have full, full members in attendance.
You don't think we can handle it? Most important.
My memory says that at one time we reserved your right-of-way along the north side of Deer Run. Does that sound right, Dan? Not here anymore. Yeah. In Deer Run. We'll have to double-check it, you know, if you're going. Barry talked about East Park Lane. Because of that, we do have right-of-way up East Park Lane. That would extend, that would be north of Deer Run. Okay. I'm not sure how much further north in the alignment on this, but we can double-check on, on this one. Do we anticipate it at the time and someday we might need an outlet? Thank you.
Well, you've been very foresightful, for sure.
Just for a change.
Well, because obviously the employer, one of the main employers is east of there. We don't want to run into another scenario where we have just the one in and out. I don't know what the development's called, over by, uh, West Fourth, south side of West Fourth. It goes up to the hill, kind of, uh, have to look around and come back out.
Yeah, it's not real nice.
Yeah.
Territory to work with. Okay. Anything further? Hearing done? On the paper, yes, opposed, no. Mandy, would you please call the roll?
Carlstone?
Yes.
Rayna Horse?
Yes.
Stan Struck?
Yes.
Deon?
Yes. Is there any reason to push ahead with this with our thin numbers? I don't believe we'll be able to waive any ordinances or readings of ordinance that requires five councilmembers. Sounds right, so. Okay. That brings us to a pool of the abstract of bills, number 2099. Do we have a motion, please?
Support.
Any discussion on any of the, uh?
I just saw a big pavement on the telecom building. How close are we getting to, to that being done?
And Noi, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe we've accepted the, the improvement. That was likely the retainage to the contractor of the telecommunications building. Now, they probably have a final checklist that they're in the process of completing. Yeah, final punch list. Noi, can you give us an update on it, please?
And they just finished the controls on the gate.
Okay.
In fact, there's, there's more than we do on the gate. There's a panel out, now, please go on there. And they, they were about to last week check that out, see what they have to do to make that operation. I think that's about it. Looks like they got everything else done.
Probably one more check to finalize.
Yeah. I believe we, we have to release your teenage, uh, for most of this, so probably, most likely, it'll be a final punch list check. Anything else? Okay. On the paper, yes, opposed, no, clear call to roll?
Carlstone?
Yes.
Rayna Horse?
Yes.
Stan Struck?
Yes.
Deon?
Yes. Motion carried. Council have anything further to bring up tonight? Anyone out there have anything they wish to bring forward? We have a hand up in the back of the room.
You want me to have the podium?
Please, please. Name the address and appreciate it, just be concise.
In Summit, 1435 Hazel. I'm really encouraged by the discussion that took place tonight concerning this development north of us. The only thing, I think we're in a little bit of a unique situation in the fact that Country Club and Hazel are both dead ends. And I think everybody on the street, not just those of us who live within 300 feet of it, have a right to know what's going on for safety concerns and that type of thing. We have elderly women, we have children, we have everything on our street. So, I would take that into consideration, big consideration. Just kind of a sidebar too, just so you know, 30 years plus ago, Mark, you might remember this, we were required, all of Country Club, all of North Hazel was on septic systems. We were required to put in our own sewer, the city sewer into it as a gravity flow sewer. Homeowners had to pay half of that. So, I want that to be remembered when you are talking about the infrastructure. We as homeowners had to pay half of the city sewer that went in our properties, along with the hookups. So, just keep that in mind too, but please consider some meetings or something for our entire streets. I think it's very important for everybody to hear the same thing. Thank you.
It's a very real, real issue. We have entirely too many dead-end streets in Pella. Poor planning way back when.
Doug Sauber, 1422 Hazel. I have not spoken with Ann at all and I did miss the first meeting. I'm in favor of this project. I have questions about the north Main connection. Uh, to me, that needs to be in the plan, in the front end. You can bond that, uh, they can put up a bond, but developers, you know, sometimes run out of money and all that kind of stuff. Also, I'd have to compliment the, the staff, the building director and his assistant, because I did talk to them personally and they answered basically all my questions. I believe the first phase one is 15 single-family homes. I assume it's going to be on the park that's nearest the golf course, but I don't know. I don't, I don't know if the city has conceptual plans yet. We haven't seen anything from this developer at all.
There are, there are conceptual plans and it will be, be disclosed at, at the time. But generally speaking, we, we go over conceptual plans once it's hammered out in the preliminary.
Okay.
So, those are all be public discussions from the city's standpoint. The preliminary plat for the development, if the zoning is approved by the council, the preliminary plat will be a separate approval process. That'll likely give the next item in, in the discussion on it. And that's when you have the street layout and also the phasing for the project as well.
I think given any timetable on this, I'm, I'm, I was in California for a month, so I missed all, all the fiber.
Yeah. I believe just judging, if the zoning proceeds, it would likely be this spring, sometime this spring, early summer, where the preliminary plat would be considered.
Construction would probably not start till this time next year.
Um, that's, that's entirely dependent on, on the developer. Some of those details will be released soon. So, I'd hate to speak, speak for him right now.
And just, you know, I don't want to, uh, the last item, I would, would complete agreement with sidewalks on both those streets. I would encourage, uh, I have a lot of, a lot of experience in government and, uh, I would encourage you to put those street, those sidewalks in. I don't care which side it in, which side it's on, it could be my side or the other side. I would think that you might want to send, snow removal is the big deal here and it was in Wisconsin. Whoever sidewalk is not on, the other side pays for it. So, that will, that will take care of that.
Keith Hoxburg, T24 South Street. Want to talk about the book Gender Queer? It's got some moral issues, right? Stealing, I'm only using that analogy here, stealing. Is it okay? Guy gets caught stealing. It's, well, it's for the kids. Yeah. They're hungry. So, is stealing then okay? There's a pedophile who wants to take kids on a camping trip for a few days. Would, would that be a hard discussion or would you want to think about that a while? Or would that be like black and white? You know? Why are we having such a difficult discussion with this book? You know? Is it, maybe it's okay, maybe, where are we in a society? You know? The library bought the book and promptly bought another book, second book. We have kids pounding on the doors, you know? We want to, we don't have enough books. Why did they go buy a second book so quick? They go rogue and just do that? Is that common practice for libraries, buy extra books all the time when nobody's really clamoring for them? Does the city council have any control over it? Does the library goes rogue on things? Do the people you represent, do they, do we have any control over that? There's a lot of discussion about where to place this book. Now, maybe we ought to put it behind a counter. You know, maybe we, maybe we should put it there, maybe we should put it here. Why, what kind of book we got that we need to discuss where to put the book? Is that a red flag? You know? Does the city, city council have any control over where they might put the book? Or does, you know, does the people you guys represent, do we have any say about that? Who's to say that the Dewey Decimal System requires this book in the orders of it to be on the second shelf from the floor for children's section? Who's to say the library's going to say, you know what? We're on our own, the city has no patrol, we're just going to go ahead and put it there. Although we've all talked about, maybe we shouldn't. Who's to say they won't go ahead and do that? Do you, does the city council have any control over this? Do we, the people have any say over this? Or is this totally up to the library? You know, I think that there's, we got some questions that we really need to ask ourselves. Why are we discussing this book? The drag queen comes to town, the library calls it in, ALA says, I think, you know, here's a number to call, bring in the drag queen. Does the city council have any control over saying that's wrong or right? From what I've been hearing, we don't have any control. We point it, but where you guys are go, we'll give you half a million dollars at the end of the year. Maybe, maybe we should have some, us people represented, by you representing us people, have some control over this. Because you know, they, ALL, ALA has phone number of the drag queen. Who's going to stop them? And there's no law against it. They can bring it right in and we can just all sit here and say, wow, we'll go ahead and patrol. So, I guess I'm asking you guys, you know, maybe, maybe we ought to get some control over our library. Half a million dollars goes there every year, right? Wages, heating, utilities, whatever. You know, you, Mr. Hopkins ain't here, but he's a businessman. Lynn, you're a business person. Do you just throw out a half million dollars and at the end of the year tell me how it was spent? Or are you kind of like, you know? That's our money. We're giving it to you to rep, you're representing us. After we give you that half a million dollars, we would kind of like to be a little bit, you know, represented and more control on that. So, yeah, tonight, basically what I'm asking is a couple things. Why are we even having a discussion about something like this? It should be black or white. And the other thing I'm asking is, let's get some control from the public. And you guys represent the public. Let's, because I've been hearing it's, you know, we just pay the budget, that's all we do. So, I'm asking you for some control and some common sense of, you know, if a pedophile, you know, going to take my kids out? No, you wouldn't even think twice about that. Why are we discussing like, we've been just, yeah, maybe we should have it here, maybe we should have it there. Come on, it ain't that hard to figure out, this ain't right. Thank you for your time, guys.
As a patron of the library, I might be able to shed a little light on the issue of the second copy of the book.
Thank you.
It is, uh, I think it's the law.
It is, uh.
Consequences. So, much attention has been brought to the book. When I went in to check it out and read it carefully, there were eight, 10 people ahead of me. What happens when there's that much demand for addition? You get another copy. That would just be kind of the common sense approach to it.
There is a reason that people are serving it, right?
Yeah. A whole bunch of attention has been.
But did you have a lot of children clamoring at the door wanting to read it?
Not that I'm aware of.
Correct.
Okay, anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
Karma Ruthven, 300 West Fifth Street, Karma of the City. I'm here about the book, and I'm just going to keep it short, because it's, like I said the last time, it's the same old thing. But we have nothing against the transgender aspect, it's there against the pictures and what they represent. And also, you know, we keep hashing this out and, you know, a decision being made as you just put it behind the counter, you know, like Keith said, it's just black and white. Why, why are we going on and on and on with this? How long do we have to keep going? Because we're not going to give up. So is there something that you guys can do to, that it's put behind the counter? I mean, that's not asking a lot. You know? So, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing done, we'd honor a motion to adjourn.
Some moves.
Some moves. Support. On favor, yes. Opposed, no. No, press call the roll.
Raynor Horse.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Stan Struck.
Yes.
Motion carried. We are adjourned.